Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I call to order the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And council members and audience, would you please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all once again for being with us tonight. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
President.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on April 26, 2022, and a regular meeting on April 26, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, then we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoptions.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement for this evening?
Yes, sir. One second. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice the timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item on our agenda, Public Hearing, Item 22-139. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir, public hearing on proposed real property tax increase.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a few registered speakers for this particular item. Our first speaker is going to be Ms. Joanne Clark. Joanne Clark, ma'am, please state your name, address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, honorable members of council. Joanne Clark, the Churchland Civic League. Upon election, each one of you raised your right hand and swore an oath. The oath was to promote, protect, and ensure the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Portsmouth. I hope today that in your final decisions, you will keep that in mind because the health, safety, and welfare is at risk if we don't maintain our cash reserves, ensure that we have adequate staffing for our emergency, fire, police services, paramedics, ambulances, and so on, and that we ensure that our children get a good education. These are all things on everyone's mind tonight and all the time. Clean drinking water, clean air, all these things that we want, but we want safe communities too. I know, we're a rascally bunch. We want a lot of things, but we want to ensure a certain quality of life. And not for everyone, quality of life is not always the same. Some maybe require some other things, but I hope in your decisions tonight that you will listen to the citizens and keep us in mind of what our needs are. In listening to the work session, I appreciate Churchland area being included in some of your projects. I really do. But I have some concerns about how the expenditures of the ARPA funds are going to be because they do balance of how you're going to spend projects and how you're going to look at capital improvement and so forth. So let me just say that the $56 million of ARPA funds is a gift, and it's how we ensure that gift has some longevity to it and that we use a wise decision in how we spend it. Five million of it you have proposed and already allocated to go to private groups and citizens groups. You also added $2.5 million to the 5G project. Initially, the city manager started with 2.5, and I think you opted for the full 5 million.
Mr. Mayor.
And then there was...
Excuse me, Ms. Clark. Just a point of order, the public hearing is on the real property tax increase. Are we going to stick to that?
It affects our taxes.
Right.
But... Where is it?
That is a point well taken, but it is encompassing in the tax, so we'll allow it. Go for it, ma'am.
All of these items reflect on the rates that you put on restaurants and breweries, reflects the amount of personal property tax, reflects our real estate tax. I, like many other citizens, live on Social Security. It's a fixed income, and it's not very big. So I come to you today talking about things that are big money. Now, unless somebody here has won the Lotto and you're holding out on us, please share. But we're a relatively poor bunch here, and there's a lot of poverty in the city. And we see all these increases. It's startling. My neighbor got his personal property tax over $2,000. He nearly had a heart attack, which by the way, if we don't have paramedics for and he dials 911, what good does it do? This $5 million plus the $2.5 million you appropriated could pay for a lot of paramedics, a lot of police, and a lot of ambulances. So please keep in mind these vital, life-saving, health, safety, and welfare issues. And thank you. I'll see you on the next item.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 22-139 is a notice of proposed real property tax increase. Due to new construction or improvement to property exceeding last year's total assessed value of 8.74 percent. 8.74 percent does not equal 8.71 percent. Why is the tax increase more than needed? The city's finance officers have been overspending the people's money with new construction and infrastructure improvements without the people's consent, as well as borrowed more money than allowed. How did this new construction and improvement occur? Let's review the Board's Commissions, Authorities, and Committees Information Manual. The Portsmouth City Council maintains a strong commitment to citizens' participation as evidenced by large number of boards, commissions, authorities, and committees established by City Council. The manual was created to familiarize citizens with the purpose and function of the various boards, commissions, authorities, and committees appointed by City Council for the citizens to know his or her role in city government. How did the citizens on the Economic Development Authority and the Planning Commission oversee the need for new construction or improvement to property? Let's look at the organizational chart of the city to see where the Economic Development Authority is attached to the Economic Development Department. There is none. In fact, the EDA is under the city manager's office. Where is the Planning Department listed in the organizational structure? Is the Economic Development Department nearby? Is the Planning Commission aligned with the Planning Department? Why not? Both commissions are on opposite sides of the chart. What does that mean? It means that there is no communication to have checks and balances to make sure there's money to pay for new construction and improvements. What is the responsibility of the Economic Development Authority? It is to foster business growth within the city and create employment opportunities. Some of the EDA's more important powers are to purchase land for business use and to increase tax-free revenue, bonds for private enterprise, and the acquisition of land, buildings, equipment, and related facilities. The Planning Commission's responsibility is to develop, recommend, and interpret a comprehensive physical development plan for the city and to engage in a continuous urban planning program to open to citizens' participation. The Planning Commission serves as an advisor to the City Council on primary land use matters as well as interacting with other boards and commissions at the local, intermunicipal, regional, state, and federal levels on land use development. The increase in taxation is because the Planning Department and the Economic Development Department does not have the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Authority attached, and neither of the departments are attached to each other. So the question is, how can we, the people, fix the lack of communication structure in the city so we, the people, can prevent our taxes being increased? The seven elected City Council members are responsible to oversee the efficient working of our city's department and inform the city managers to manage the people's money, not spend our money without the people's consent.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker... Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll.
Evening, Mayor, members of staff. Steve Carroll, 312 River Ridge Drive. About 15 years ago, this council, City Council, considered bringing Norfolk garbage, or excuse me, New York garbage to this city by barge. All the sludge, the slurry, the stench, the filth of it for a little bit of tax revenue. And I and a lot of other people stood in opposition to it as it being detrimental to the long-term interest of the city. Council changed their mind. Thank goodness. And here was the base of my argument. Imagine our mayor looking out this window with a prospective investor in this city, and here comes one of those barges, and he says, "What's that?" "Oh, that's our weekly shipment of garbage coming from New York." Imagine the image of that. Now, fast forward 15 years from now or from then, and our mayor is meeting with a potential investor. "Hey, when we get done, let's slip down here to the vacant lot and go see the city girls knock over some props with their rear ends. Or we can go down, and you can stop by the cannabis shop and pick up whatever you want to pick up."
Sir?
Is that what we need tax revenue for?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes, sir.
Please, please stay on topic.
Oh, I am, sir.
Okay.
I have a point.
Thank you.
These revenue sources are beneath the dignity of a respectable city. You're about to consider a rate of $1.30 on astronomically inflated housing prices. This is going to hurt a lot of people in our city. Now, you justify spending $6 million on astroturf or football fields when we have infrastructure like sewer, water, drainage that is in desperate need of repair and a whole lot more than $6 million of it. What attractions are we going to bring in here on those football fields? What is going to be brought in here that can't be done on grass? Now, in response to those who are so quick to sell us out, these are Hopkins fishing There's a history here. They were invented right here in 1949. This is the most famous productive fishing lure ever invented, and it started right here. And it was manufactured over in Norfolk on Boys' Avenue. I've caught fish with these in freshwater, saltwater, brackish water. I don't know if the plant is still over there. I think their headquarters is now in Pennsylvania. We sit on the apex of the most lucrative recreational fishing arena on the entire East Coast, and we don't do anything with it. Instead of blowing $6 million on astroturf to bring in smut shows, why don't we go out and get our economic development people to go out to Walmart and some of these companies, look at these fishing lure companies, and get them to build their warehouses in this city? Get them to put their distribution centers here. Why aren't we doing that? You wanted answers? You wanted options? You got it. There it is, right there.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Conrad, and please forgive me, sir, if I do not pronounce your name correctly.
Okay, my relative casual dress. I just came from Virginia Beach Parks and Rec. So Mayor Glover, Manager Jones, and members Barnes, Moody, Lucas Burke, Whitaker, Battle, and Woodard, this is my Portsmouth government addressing debut. It comes as a big topic, too, a property tax increase, and it's relevant to me. As of late April, when my fiancee and I closed on a house in the West Haven neighborhood, the price was $234,000. If we went on that alone for tax purposes at $1.30 per 100, an annual $3,042 tax bill would be requested. So where does that investment help? Portsmouth firefighters and paramedics are posting concerns of severe underfunding of their infrastructure, and if Portsmouth does anything like Virginia Beach, then pay for city workers is an issue too. I'll be increasingly concerned of this as a Portsmouth property owner looking to expand holdings in town, and by default, the tax load will be going up. As a member of the community action team, I'll be watching and judging votes going forward to hold electives to a standard where community interest outweigh big budgeting interests. So this is my first time speaking to you guys. I enjoyed it, so have a great night, and I'll see you later.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. You do not, you are not required to have signed up prior to come forward. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing, proposed property tax increase, you can come forward, state your name, address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable council members, and other neighbors. I'm Mark Gadola-Giatrofsky. You can reach me by mail at PO Box 50141, Portsmouth 23703. I did not speak on this two weeks ago. I wanted to hear what others of my neighbors had to say about this item. You know, the General Assembly is really big on transparency for other entities besides themselves. So somebody got the bright idea up in Richmond some years ago that whenever property valuations increase, and that results in a net tax increase, not one imposed by their local council or their county board of supervisors, but by the workings of the economy, that it should be declared as an effective tax increase on the citizens, and then you all could receive negative comments about you raising taxes. Well, the problem really lies in the nature of the taxing authority that localities have. The Commonwealth has the ability to tax income. We do not. We are left to tax wealth. For most people, wealth is in the form of real property. The other aspect of wealth that you get to tax is personal property, but that's not what's at issue here. So you get to benefit from the vagaries of the economy, and you get to do the calculations that say this is an eight-point-something-something effective increase, but you didn't vote for it. And when property valuations fall and tax revenues fall, and you haven't changed the tax rate, you don't get thanked for the fact that you're receiving less revenue. So go figure. Something about the good that you do will be interred with the bones, and people will talk about what you didn't do. At any rate, we are in the midst of an inflationary cycle that has affected the housing market. It provides a temporary windfall to local government, and what have you decided to do with it? You've decided to increase the compensation for public employees who are living with the same sort of inflationary cycle as other citizens. So instead of their having to look for higher-paying jobs elsewhere, the city has devoted a portion of the additional revenue to increasing wages for our employees. Good on you. For two years in a row, you have elected to fully fund the schools' request, the schools that have been chronically underfunded. Good on you. I would rather give you the additional money because the value of my home has risen in the marketplace and have you use the money for those sorts of expenditures, those necessary expenditures, for maintaining city services in a time of inflation without actually raising the real estate tax rate. So take a victory lap, take the money, and use it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and you can come forward and speak on this matter. If you would state your name and address, ma'am, you will have five minutes.
Catherine Howell. I haven't been here for a while, and we're talking about increased property taxes. We are talking about increased property taxes for a city that has more violent crime per capita than Chicago, Illinois, and we only have 95,000 people. We have people who are losing everything, everything, and you are increasing our taxes. Forty percent of Portsmouth is owned by the government, no taxes. Churches, they don't pay taxes, but yet you give churches a grant to clean up their cemeteries. And I would like to know how much all of you have profited since you've been in office. PPP loans alone, $380,000 from one of you, $24,000, and $124,000. That's three of you. Your businesses that got grants. We didn't get grants. Where are our grants? Where is our assistance? Our kids have PTSD. Our kids can't even go to school, and you guys get loans and grants, and we don't. And you guys own your own businesses, and you guys get contracts and everything else from your friends and their businesses. And we have 10 police officers at any time for this whole city, three if they're in court. Portsmouth paramedics and fire are in desperate need of help, and you guys have a $2.6 million annual golf fund, and you own the golf course. Where's that revenue coming from? Why are you taxing the people that need help the most? And all of you have more money now than you did when you started.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And I want to remind everyone that there's a certain decorum that we need to display when we're in the council chamber. Our next speaker, sir, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for paying attention. I think we have two issues here with the tax increase. One is that there's some people that can barely afford it, and one is that there's some citizens very, very concerned about how it's being spent. My opinion's controversial. I'm with you, guys. We need the money. But we also have a $900 million infrastructure debt that has not been addressed. So I'm asking, how are we going to spend this money that the city's going to receive? Are we going to spend it wisely on a debt that's been ignored for years and years and years for many councils before you, and for many councils that some of you have been on, y'all have ignored it? So I received some criticism from one of the council members this week about saying this council is at fault. Well, yes, you will be at fault if you don't address this $900 million infrastructure debt. We don't have water. We don't have sewer. We don't have good electrical lines. We don't have good storm drainage. It's pretty bad out there. So we're not asking you only to... We're asking you to manage the money wisely, and we don't think that it's being done. So let's go for it, but let's go for it wisely. I'm sorry, I didn't say Dr. William Johnson. Pardon, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor.
Once again, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this particular topic, you may come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Sir?
My name is Merle Rutledge, and I'm running for public office, but it's here in District 18 in Portsmouth. And due to that fact, I'd like to keep my address private. At this timeframe, we should not be increasing taxes by not even one dime. We should be lowering taxes. With the COVID relief funds, this should have plugged in every single hole that the city should have ever had. But instead, when money is spent recklessly, then we are looking at the results as much as I looked at the building that I just walked into. I understand that we need to raise more revenue, but not more taxes. If you want businesses to leave here in droves, then the people who created those businesses, especially small businesses, they can't afford another tax increase. They need more relief than they do another loan. Most of them are surviving by predatory loans. While many of you up here, you claim to love this city, you claim to love everything about it, we must remember, it's the people in this room that made this city exactly what it is. And we must provide relief not only to them, but we also must show good faith that we are using the money wisely, and that this timeframe is not. Like they said, the police officers are hurting, paramedics is hurting, small businesses is hurting, ordinary families are hurting. If you increase even an extra dollar, why not look for revenue instead? This has been the problem. We cannot increase more taxes and keep getting the same service and getting the same empathy, which is low left. People are homeless out here in the streets. People are starving. You see it every single day when you pass the store, even though you may not stop. But there's people that still stop, and there's still people who are struggling every single day just to afford the bills that they have right now, the electricity bill, the gas bill. Every single thing in America has increased. Portsmouth could be a good sign of faith that we don't have to increase taxes. We need to tighten our belts and start looking at exactly how we do business. If we are increasing taxes during inflation, that means we are the reason. If we are increasing taxes during inflation, that means we are the reason, as public servants, that we continue to go out of business. And Portsmouth can't afford to tax their citizens anymore. And that's exactly why I came up here to say something that needs to be said. Maybe if y'all cut y'all salaries, y'all cut y'all excessive trips, y'all cut y'all luxuries. What you see behind us is exactly the results. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this public hearing item, you can come forward and you will have five minutes. Seeing no more? Please state your name, address, sir, and you have five minutes.
So, I mentioned last time I was here, I worked day and night. What I didn't mention is that I'm also paying attention. The first thing I do when I get to work, throw my earbuds in and I start listening to meetings. Every public work session, city council meeting, Economic Development Authority, Broadband Authority, Planning Commission, Port and Industrial Commission. So, I know why you're wanting to raise taxes. You're in violation of your own debt policy. But you know who's not? Me. I work hard every day because I know how to earn money to pay my debts and balance a checkbook and cut spending when necessary and not blow money on frivolous crap when I don't have any to spend. I come home, get to work on stuff around the house, throw my earbuds in, and I'm sitting here listening to these meetings. And listen to some of y'all sit here and talk about just scheming up new ways to get our money. What you need to do is control your spending like the rest of us do. I cut my cable off years ago. I don't have Netflix. I don't have Internet. Why should I have to pay for the irresponsibility, the irresponsible spending of others? Why should any of us have to? So, take this opportunity to do the right thing, vote no on this, go back to the drawing board, figure out how to cut spending and make the money up wherever you can. Don't take it from us. I mean, I've, I've got gashes in my tires and rims on my car from riding around on these roads, yet I'm seeing these digital walk signs on the corners to tell people when they can walk across the street that's all broke up and covered in potholes. That's, what's the point of that? I listen to these meetings and there are proven some businesses to come here and start up, even giving ARPA funds to certain people, even when they already have multiple businesses. I mean, it's not they're just giving them money to start up a business. They've, they already have two, three, four businesses.
Sir, sir, this, this particular item...
Don't interrupt me when I'm talking.
Sir?
Don't interrupt me.
You're out of order, sir.
I'm, I have the floor. Don't interrupt me.
Sir, you're, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
Sergeant at arms, would you please remove this gentleman from our chamber?
I'll walk away when I'm done talking.
You're out of order, sir.
You're out of order.
Have a good day. Thank you.
You're going to deny me my First Amendment right to speak? Portsmouth's got plenty of money for lawsuits, don't they?
Once again, this is a public hearing. The, the public hearing is dealing with your proposed real property tax increase. You do not, or you were not required to sign up for this public hearing. However, if you come forward to speak on it, that is the topic you need to speak about. Anyone who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing matter can come forward and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, then this public hearing is closed. We have now come to the item on our, on our agenda, City Manager's Report. Item 22-140. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reenact Ordinance Number 2021-27 to impose and levy taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023 on real estate, tangible personal property, privately-owned pleasure boats, privately-owned camping trailers and motorhomes, and machinery and tools within the city of Portsmouth, Virginia for the purpose of raising revenue for the support of governmental operations and the public free schools and to pay principal interest on the public debt.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we do have one speaker and that speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Members of Council. Churchland Civic League here. Talking about the levy of taxes, it looks small, but what you're about to do is a big thing. If you've looked at the finances of recent times, the stock market's not doing too well. We knew what went up will come down. We also know that this housing market artificially went up and we can expect it will go down. My question is, if you're making some nice revenue from our property, personal property, and our real estate taxes, when it goes down, I'm sure you'll have to do the same thing. You'll have to bring down our market rate, 100% market rate, when it gets normal again. When that happens, we will have more bills to pay. Talking about bills to pay, we spent nearly $13 million on this 5G initiative. It started with the previous mayor and members of council, who four of you were sitting there then, when we invested $4.8 million when the previous CFO announced that we needed to keep cash reserves so we would have a decent bond rating, a triple-A bond rating. The moment she sat down, that mayor said to the city manager before you to go ahead and appropriate $4.8 million to this 5G fund. Now, the 5G fund sounds wonderful. It's a ring. It sends communication from all the localities who participate and it goes down to Virginia Beach and it goes to the ocean and it connects us with Europe. And it's five. It's fast. It's wonderful. But there's a lot of things that we need to be concerned about. The $4.8 million turned, Sue turned into $10.8 million to actually implement the ring. And then we have to add that 2.5 that was above what was recommended by the city manager. So, we're talking $13 million once again. That was what we thought at the time, you all, that this was a great opportunity for revenue. But we don't have that kind of money to spend and it's already committed. So, the question I have to you is, how will you keep the rest of our reserves intact to provide and promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens? I will be standing by to hear.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we are ready for the roll call. Councilman Battle, so you have the floor.
Can I get the city manager to explain to the citizens exactly what we're doing here and the need for what we're doing?
I think that is up to the city manager if she's willing to explain it to that level, but I will let her address that.
We are here to approve a budget based on the needs of the city. We have addressed in this budget pay compression issues. We have addressed in this budget competitive wages. We have addressed infrastructure needs. We have debt payments that we have addressed. And basically, the needs of the city have been addressed in this budget.
And how much is the increase?
The increase overall?
Yes.
We're looking at, in real estate tax rates, real estate taxes, the increase is $9 million, of which, most of that is going towards pay compression for the entire city, but specifically focused on public safety personnel.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
And that will go from, how much an increase per 100? From what to what?
That I do not know off the top of my head.
We don't know how much the increase is going to be.
Not for, oh, you mean per 100?
Yes, that's what I said.
Well, that was the $9 million.
I mean, per...
Per household?
Yes.
Well, that's depending on the household. If you, if you think about a household, your increase will depend on whatever your assessed value might increase.
Is there... How much per 100?
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Battle. Are, are we referring to the tax rate, if there is a tax rate increase, to our current tax rate? Is that what the question you're asking, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
To answer that question, the tax rate increase is zero.
Oh.
The effective tax rate is what's being discussed. And that effective tax rate, because of the assessed values, and I think it was mentioned earlier, because the assessed rates are driven by market and because the assessed rates, the values of the home went up. And because the values of the homes went up, then the taxpayer would pay more. Just like when the values of the homes go down, the tax rate or the value of the home, what the effective tax rate would go down. So, basically, given that we have an increase in the market value of the homes, we're able to address some of the pay issues, some of the infrastructure needs that we have before us, because otherwise, we would be looking at level revenue and we would not be able to make headway or try to remain competitive with our pay.
Well, I, I think that that was very important, that that was explained to the citizens. When we do have to increase rates, it's, I don't feel comfortable just saying we're going to increase rates. I feel more comfortable if we share with them what we're doing in its entirety. We're dealing with health and safety issues, the police department, the fire department, the same things that the citizens came up and spoke about, this is what we're dealing with. And I, I thought it was important that we clarify that as best we can before we voted because I wouldn't feel right voting in the affirmative if this wasn't explained to, to the, my love, the citizens.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion amongst my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted for three.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this next item, Item B?
Yes, sir. Resolution approving the Community Planning and Development 2023 Annual Action Plan of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia and authorizing the city manager to file documents required to obtain the city's community planning and development grant entitlements.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move, move for adoption.
For Item B, we do have a speaker, our first speaker. We have two speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Thank you for letting me speak, members of council. This item is the Community Planning and Development Annual Action Plan, which I guess you're referring to the CBDG funds. Is that correct? Okay. I was really surprised that many of you were not really versed in how this works. Big entities in the federal government realize that some of these ventures that they have, like HUD and public housing, are too big. So, they downstream to smaller entities like local, localities, municipalities, so that they can handle some of those functions. Now, the loan help with the down payments for kids, the home services and so on, they conglomerate those into our region through the HRPDC to save overhead costs. If, in fact, each one of these entities had a house or a building or an office and it's staffed, you're adding more government. There's no way in the world you could get any of this accomplished of what was mentioned by the gentleman from PRHA if you only get $1.5 million a year. Just the administrative part of it alone would be shot before they even got to hand out these well-earned loans, before people could even apply for them. They wouldn't have the opportunity because the admin would eat it up. So, this is not that Portsmouth is being left out of the program. Now, you ask, how do I know this? Well, I've been working with four kids for years in the other city and I also was a loaned executive for United Way. I understand about these programs that are out there. They're really good, needy programs. So, please understand that $1.5 million that HUD is providing to localities to facilitate these programs are very much needed. If you start bringing in office space and staff and training them, they will evaporate and no one from Portsmouth will be able to do anything with those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si. Ms. Si, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 22-14BOB is to give the city manager the authority to file documents required to obtain the community planning and development grant entitlements. And the city manager is authorized to file any additional information required with the Department of Housing and Urban Development to obtain funding for the programs addressed in the plans. And some projects funded by the city are for the benefit of the entire city, responding to the request for services of the residents throughout the city. So, what are they? Look in the budget book on page 12-1 to review the community and development organizational The chart includes the Departments of Permits and Inspections, Economic Development, Planning and the Community, uh, Planning, and the Community Planning and Development Program. and the Community, uh, Planning, and the Community Planning and Development Program, and the Newport Community Development Authority. Where is the Portsmouth redevelopment and housing authority connected to, with this organizational chart? How is this resolution addressing the involvement of the people and the PRHA commissioners? Who is the city manager going to be working with to determine the needs and how to meet those needs when the city's organizational chart is not correct? See where the departments are on this chart? Two are not even listed. The Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority's mission statement: "To enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Portsmouth through resource acquisition, asset management, and pursuing innovative opportunities. PRHA plans and implements programs primarily in deteriorated neighborhoods or underutilized section of the city. The board members coordinates the operation of the public housing, urban renewal activities, and conversation, conservation, and rehabilitation district program activities in the city. PRHA is implementing the move-to-work program. So how is the city manager going to work with PRHA? There needs to be stipulation before any HUD money is requested. We, the people, need to know about why this money is needed. Just like the city got the HUD folks to pay for the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame and stuffed the police in a museum, the elected has forgotten that we, the people, are the government, and our permission must be asked for. Amend the resolution. The city manager is hereby authorized to file any additional information as required after consulting with the PRHA, EDA, planning, park, and Portsmouth Volunteer for the Homeless Commissioners, as well as the finance officers, as may be required with the Department of Housing and Urban Development in order to obtain funding for the programs addressed in the plans."
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any further discussion amongst my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is approved, five to adopt.
Item C, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance adopting the FY 2023 Classification and Pay Plan for Employees of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we do have three speakers for this item, and the first speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark.
Church on Civically. Regarding being the good stewards of our revenue. What's interesting to me is the pay plan we had before, which was really, that step plan was not the greatest. The plan now might be good for some, but in many departments, they are short-staffed. There are many openings that have not been filled. I can think of three departments right now that are understaffed. I will not mention them, hoping people behind me will, because you don't want to hear the same thing over and over again. But in any event, I would, if I had my choice, and I was in charge, but nobody asked, I would think we need to fill positions before we start handing out raises. A lot of people like their jobs, but they don't like doing the jobs of three people. It's stressful. It doesn't matter how much money you throw at them. If they have to do work for unfilled positions, because for whatever reason we haven't been able to fill them, giving their money, more money, isn't gonna really make them rest better, sleep better, maybe they'll be able to do a little entertainment more, but in any event, they're still doing the job of more than one person. So I hope you'll consider that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Chris LaLange. Please state your address, sir, and you have five minutes.
My name is Chris LaLange from 3704 Winchester Drive. Good evening, members of council, Mayor Glover and City Manager Jones. My name is Chris LaLange, and as I said, I'm the treasurer of Local 539, representing over 90% of firefighters and paramedics in Portsmouth, with over 200 active members. We own and operate our union hall, as I said, at 3704 Winchester Drive. In recent meetings, I've listened to concerns for higher taxes, public works, and various other needs. The only thing I can speak on is matters and needs of members of our local who put their life on the line every day. They shown up to work through a pandemic, unable to work from home. The nature of our job is teamwork and in-your-face. Working through an opioid crisis and a level of gun violence not seen in decades, it's a war zone in the streets. On June 28th, I was shot protecting a citizen in need, severing a nerve in my arm and jeopardizing the continuation of my career and my future. I'm not bitter. All parties are alive today. We did the best we could with information available. I'm not here to talk about the events surrounding that incident. I'm here as a voice for our members and the needs of the community. Our greatest need is an investment in our people, our greatest asset. In the 90s, Portsmouth, like many cities, ended a costly city retirement plan in favor of a state system for public safety. What this allows for today is free agency, employees moving through agencies, competing agencies at will, no longer tied to one city and one plan. People come and go in every sector. The fire department, however, the cost of replacement for each departure is $50,000. This is the time and money spent certifying new hires to meet qualifications. The same is true for our paramedics, as months are needed training them to acclimate to our EMS system, a constant wheel of leaving and hiring at the expense of taxpayers. And what happens in the interim while we wait for new hires to meet certifications? The extra load is carried by tenured employees, increasing workload, and mandatory overtime. You may look at our vacancy rates at any given time and ask, what's the problem? This goes back to the wheel of lack of retention and then new hiring, as the fire department operates every day on razor-thin margins. We staff nine engines, three ladders, one rescue truck, five medics, 24/7, no exceptions. We have members with torn ACLs, slipped discs, burn injuries, now gunshot wounds, maternity leave, using their earned time off benefits, or taking care of their mental health. Doesn't matter if somebody qualified has to be on that truck. When a handful of people leave, yes, it can throw us into a tailspin. More concerning is the fact, our most recent hiring process only gathered 100 applicants. 80%, 80% of those won't qualify. What happened to the days, historically, where public safety had 10 times that amount? Long hours, toxic work cultures, and underpaid professionals comparable to their peers. Portsmouth is routinely number one in violent crime per capita in the state. Our EMS full-time paramedic provider staffing consistently hovers around 50% due to the turnover. I'm highlighting the 20 spots in position control whose sole job it is to ride an ambulance. Currently, we are robbing Peter to pay Paul. Portsmouth is not paying competitive wages for full-time paramedics. Our new hires are here for one or two years if we're lucky and move on. No one gets in this field, into this field for the money, but there comes a time where the work and the risk you put in doesn't match the reward. We need to flip the script and allocate the funds to make public safety salaries enviable in the region. Come here for the challenge and the compensation, not only increasing new hire pay, which has happened reactively, but by investing in the time and experience current employees have been giving to the city. At the end of fiscal year 2020, the unreserved balance portion of the general fund had surpassed $70 million. The asset-to-liability ratio was a healthy 5.75, and the percentage of balance compared to expenditures was 33%, double of what it was in 2014. We have excellent bond ratings, and kudos to management. The balance sheets look great. We understand the general fund is not for day-to-day operations, but for asset improvements. We can improve by investing in our greatest asset, our people. Add to that ARPA disbursement, plus our EMS billing returning their highest total ever back to the general fund last fiscal year, over $2 million. When a member comes to me and asks, why haven't I seen my family in days? Why does it feel like our workload has tripled? Why aren't they paying paramedics more? I really, I don't have an answer for them. We are not proposing being treated differently than other city employees when it comes to raises. We're proposing to be treated equitably amongst our peers and our profession. We want our members to continue to choose to serve Portsmouth. The time is here and now. We have flexible proposals to invest in our public safety professionals and address this compounding issue, as many localities already have, some mid-fiscal year. Work with us, we're here, we can work together. We have a common goal of providing the highest quality and experienced groups of service to the citizens. My brothers and sisters here in support of me, please rise. Mayor, I yield back to you, and please, I encourage questions or comments.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions, Mr. LaLange. Thanks for being here. I understand we have 38 full-time paramedics, 13 part-time.
That's correct.
How many of those are actually out in the field working on ambulances? And how many of those are in administrative positions?
Again, as I mentioned in the speech, that we have allotted 20 positions. 13 of those are filled now. We have one in training and more on the way. Again, that leads to the wheel, but 13 to answer your question right now. The others are in administrative roles, logistics, supervisory, training, and community programs that are absolutely needed, and we are not advocating to steal them, to put them on medics.
Some of those probably can't serve on an ambulance, right?
That's correct, supervisory roles are certain of, you know, roles that where they cannot ride the ambulance because they're 40-hour work week.
So that leaves us short, and when we're short, and we need to hire people, some bad things happen. Turnover is costly?
Yes, and if I may, the BLS medic shifts, which is a big, you know, deal for our fire department right now, and I just want to give some numbers on that. In 2022, 135 shifts have been filled without a paramedic. Those are 12-hour blocks. 135 shifts in 2022 on your medics did not have a, have a paramedic onboard. They did have an EMT Advanced or an EMT Basic. These, these boys are filled by firefighters riding in charge of the medic on a routine basis. Three out of the five ambulances in the city are not allowed to have the same staff on it for 24 hours. Our OMD won't allow it. Why? Due to the call volume and workload for those particular areas. The decision-making capabilities of a fighter need to remain optimal. Paramedics work 12 hours and go home. Our firefighters are asked to do the same job for 12 hours, then be responsible for the safe operation of a fire engine or life rescue the other 12 hours. Has this routinely been the model? Yes and no. This is how a fire-based EMS system is designed, but never in this quantity have we heavily relied on our firefighters. We are not advocating for our paramedics that hold other job titles and other supervisory positions to staff the medic. They are vital for training logistics, public programs. We are advocating for competitive wages for our full-time paramedics to break this continuous cycle.
Now, that 130, is that year-to-date, or?
That is year-to-date, yes.
Okay.
Yes, just in 2022.
And when we're short, we only have five ambulances, other jurisdictions can pick up the slack.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
Doesn't that cost us revenue?
Yes, every mutual aid unit that comes in the city that then transports a patient, we lose that revenue, yes.
So that, that's definitely not a good thing. And when paramedics aren't on the ambulance, that, the care is not as good as it could be?
It is not at the highest level, no, and thus, the interventions that can be completed are minimized as well. So without the paramedic, you can't bill for the higher interventions, but it's all about the customer care and the citizen care.
And my guess is that the quantity of care calls has increased through the years. So how, how many ambulances do you think we actually need if we were providing top-level care?
We currently have five medics, we've had five medics in the city for the last 12 years. Our call volume has increased substantially among that period. I think we've been an advocate of staffing at least one more medic. Ideally, in a perfect world, we'd like to have two, but we know one is absolutely necessary. We can't staff the five that we have now, so it's hard to ask for another one. But yes, we would like the staffing and the medics, staffing for an additional medic as well as the current.
And when you're short-staffed, I would think that overtime is filling, picking up the slack. So I guess my question to the city manager is, how are we on our overtime budget?
I'm glad you asked. I'm gonna have the fire chief come up, because I think a lot of the questions you're asking should be responded to by the fire chief, who's tasked with the responsibility of managing that department.
Chief, may I go back, sir, would you come forward, please? You have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Can I have the question again?
Well, my, my question is, since we're short-staffed, common sense would tell me that overtime is probably prevalent to pick up the slack. So how is our overtime budget doing, or year-to-date?
Yeah, yes, sir, so we're over $1 million in overtime expenditures.
Over a million above the budgeted amount?
Yeah, the, the budgeted amount is a little over a half a million dollars, and to date, we have spent over a million. But it's all relative to the staffing that is available. So during the pandemic and also within the, the process, if someone is out sick, we don't put a unit out of service. If our staffing levels don't accommodate and leave a vacancy, we have to hire overtime for that.
So that's, that, that's a tremendous cost. So what, what are we doing, and I guess the question's to you, back to the city manager, what are we doing to fill the gaps and to recruit?
Well, from my knowledge, and the chief can fill in specifics, we have, we added 15 positions two budgets ago. As my understanding, and the chief can definitely deal with the specifics.
That was in 2021, and didn't we hire five paramedics as well?
I'll let the?
Yes, sir. So in FY 2021, 15 firefighters were added to the complement, along with five paramedics.
Right.
So the current staffing right now is, we are at 90% of staffing of the complement. We have five paramedic vacancies, where two people just last week accepted the position as a full-time paramedic. So we have three paramedic vacancies in the complement. On the fireside, we have, let me make sure I get this correct. On the fireside, we have 14 firefighter vacancies, and we have five fire officer vacancies that we have to fill. So in the fireside of the department, there's 230 in the complement. So within that 230, 21 of those positions will need to be filled. So just last month, we graduated seven firefighters. It takes about 11 months, right about a year, to get them through the academy. This fall, we will graduate another 10. So as we fill these positions, we, we do have 48 people on a list that we will start interviews this month, and we intend to hire and fill the rest of the vacancy positions in July. So we are at the most optimum staffing right now, due to the fact that in 2020 and in 2021, we have, we've hired Groups A, Group B, and we're getting ready to graduate Group C, like I said, in the fall. So we have done a continuous recruitment effort, and we've done a continuous recruit school since 2020.
Well, that, you know, recruiting is, is good, and you gotta fill it, but as, as we sat here tonight, what is the deployable figure?
Right. Deployable is, we, we have 230 minus 14, because that's the vacancies, minus the five, which are the promotions. So 210, and then we have 10 in the academy, and we have three off of the streets as instructors. So 13. So deployable, I didn't do that math real quick, but it's somewhere around 200. So deployable, I didn't do that math real quick, but it's somewhere around two hundred.
Okay. And where are we, where's the turnover occurring? Are the cities, and what's the biggest reason? Pay, or what?
In the past year, the majority of the turnover or accidents were retirements. The next level of folks leaving were, they were leaving to go to the private sector. When I looked at the firefighters that were leaving, no firefighters left for other cities. One firefighter did leave to go to the Navy Regional Fire Department, because she was married to someone that was in the military, and she wanted to be portable to travel or leave the area as a firefighter.
Mayor, as a point of order, does this stick into what we're doing as it pertains to Item C?
It is the pay plan, and they're talking about staffing with the pay. So as a point of order, it is in order.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr.
Does anybody else have to follow up for me? Okay.
No, sir, just thank you for your service, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Justin Wiley. Mr. Wiley, please state your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Madam Clerk, my name is Justin Wiley. I reside at twenty-three Gillis Road in the Craddock neighborhood. I have been a resident of this city for twenty-three years. You're looking at a person that wears many hats. I'm a husband, father, Assistant Scout Master of Troop Two Thirty-three, Portsmouth firefighter, and a tax-paying resident. The direction the fire department is currently traveling is opposite of twenty years ago when I was hired. Every ambulance had a minimum of one paramedic and one EMT shock trauma, now an EMT advanced level provider onboard to provide patient care. Every engine and ladder company had five personnel assigned, and a total of eleven people were allowed to take leave each day while also receiving Off-Kelly Day and requiring minimal overtime. The call volume has increased every year, along with the fact that we just completed our busiest year-to-date in two thousand twenty-one with over twenty thousand calls for service. What I'm about to tell you is what a tax-paying resident who is an employee sees from the inside. The city currently has five ambulances that operate twenty-four-seven. Each ambulance needs to be staffed with a minimum of one paramedic and one EMT advanced provider for each twelve-hour tour duty, which equates to five paramedics from zero-eight-hundred to twenty-hundred, and five paramedics from twenty-hundred to oh-eight-hundred. This is split between four twelve-hour shifts, requiring a minimum of twenty full-time paramedics. The EMT level providers are pulled from fire apparatus to staff the ambulance, which has been an ongoing practice since nineteen ninety-six, henceforth part of the reason for needing a minimum of five personnel assigned to each fire apparatus. A press release from the city stated that the city is staffed with fifty-one paramedics. It failed to mention how many of these positions are required for administrative staff and firefighter paramedics that are employed and perform dual roles. I can tell you that to fully staff the EMS division, the budget needs to provide salaries for approximately twenty full-time paramedics just to staff the ambulances the city has now, and four EMS supervisors for those paramedics, plus the number of paramedics needed for staffed positions to provide compliance and training. Out of the fifty-one positions mentioned, there are approximately seventeen personnel, by my count, serving in dual-role positions as a firefighter/paramedic, ranging from the rank of deputy chief all the way down to firefighter. Every person in these positions has spent time riding an ambulance and knows what it's like. When pulled from fire apparatus, battalion chiefs, company officers such as myself, and the other crew members have to rely on other department personnel to fill the gap that's created. This happens on a frequent basis. These personnel should only be needed to supplement ambulances in case a paramedic is needed. Some of them ride during the day and then have to stay up throughout the night, riding a fire engine, chasing a medic unit that is not staffed with a paramedic, but is said staffed with two EMT advanced. This is an increase in fuel and maintenance costs and a large risk to public safety, not only us as personnel, but also the citizens. By not fully staffing ambulances to the highest level of care, you're cutting the level of emergency medical service provided to my family and I, and every other tax-paying citizen in this city, everyone sitting behind me, every one of you sitting up here in front of me. I'm asking you tonight to not vote on this budget unless it presents to you a minimum of twenty-four full-time paramedics to staff six full-time ambulances, with a starting pay of fifty-five thousand dollars upon completion of the Portsmouth EMS Academy. Our paramedics can work for other localities for more money than they're receiving now and do a lot less work. They deserve better. You decided to increase my property assessments for the upcoming year. Don't decrease my services unless you decrease what I'm paying in taxes. The city throws money out the window every day that mutual aid ambulances and fire apparatus respond to the city for incidents. Keep this money in the city and improve public safety, especially fire and EMS. I'm currently at an intersection in my life. I have vehicles here that I'm paying taxes on, and I have an opportunity to move to Surrey County, where I will pay less on those vehicles. Make a vote to make me want to keep my family here in Portsmouth, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council members, is there any additional discussion on this matter? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Well, until, I would like to vote yes, but I'm going to vote no, because I don't feel that we're making the right decisions in getting our EMS, paramedics, and firefighters what they duly deserve, and really what our citizens deserve. You know, we have a reputation that's been earned through the years of men and women who have made our fire department the best in the state and the best in the nation, and they're still, they've still had that reputation due to their work. Unfortunately, we're not supporting that effort in this budget, in this pay plan, so I can't, I can't in good conscience vote for it until we address the needs of our people and our citizens, actually.
Dr. Whitaker?
I got a question. Does this not include the fire department?
Yes.
It does include the fire department, right?
It does.
Mr. Woodard?
You said this budget does includes.
It does.
No.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted five-two.
And Madam Clerk, we are now at Item twenty-two dash one-four-zero D. And would you read, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance to amend and reordain Sections nineteen dash one, twenty-five dash ninety-two, twenty dash twenty, and twenty dash seven, and Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, for the purpose of establishing, rescinding, or modifying taxes, rates, and fees for non-resident library cards, youth, and senior use of recreational facilities, itinerant vendors, and alcoholic beverage licenses.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we do have one speaker, and that speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
What typically happens when you don't raise taxes, you raise fees. I can't write off the fees, and everyone has to pay them. Now, I think it's admirable that you're giving some things back, free library cards to those who don't live in the city and so forth, and services for the youth. But I do have concern about the restaurants and the alcoholic beverage licenses. We have a lot of small restaurant business owners who've been suffering through COVID, and I think this is not a timely thing to do. I know what you're trying to do by balance the money, but timeliness is important, and I think this is when restaurants are just trying to get back on their feet, and this is just another way to sock it to them. Thank you.
This is a public hearing?
No, it's not.
Oh, this, I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
No.
So we don't have any more speakers on this? So call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
And Mayor Glover is absent. This item is adopted six-zero.
So we're now on twenty-two, one-fourty, E. Can you read the address?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to increase monthly stormwater utility fees as of July one, two thousand twenty-two, as authorized by Section thirty-one point two dash twenty-six of said code.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have one speaker for that item, and the speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Once again, another fee. Surprise, surprise. Here's my concern. I actually was on that blue ribbon group of people who enacted the ordinance of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act some thirty-some years ago. The intent of stormwater is not to fulfill unallocated CIP projects. I sure hope you're not using this increased fee for that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, on Item D, do we call the roll?
On Item D, yes.
Okay.
We're on Item E?
Yes.
And we need a motion.
We need a motion of a second, yeah. Move for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion among my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted five-two.
We have now come to Item F. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to increase rates for water and sewage services as authorized by Section thirty-eight dash eighty-three and thirty-eight dash one-seventeen of said code.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion in second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we do have a registered speaker for this item, and it is Ms. Joanne Clark.
In the sixties, a brilliant mind from Portsmouth City Council decided, hey, we can buy these lakes in Suffolk. Water's going to be more valuable than oil. It's a life-giving resource that every citizen will require for quality of life. So we have reservoirs, and everybody wants some. We currently contract out with Norfolk, Suffolk, Chesapeake, but yet, we're paying more, the residents of Portsmouth are paying more for the very water that we own than other cities. The contracts for Chesapeake, which were renewed a couple of years ago, actually lowered their water rate. We pay, all of us, pay more than Chesapeake does for the water they get from our lakes. Something's not right here. This needs to be reversed. Maybe we should be charging others for water more than us. Where is the benefit of being and staying a resident of Portsmouth? Is there something else we could do that would make us happy? Confucius said, "Keep those close happy, and those from afar will come." What are we doing to keep those here able to enjoy the gifts of Portsmouth, the value of Portsmouth? What can we do? Or maybe we can give everybody free cable. We'll have to work on something here, because we're getting the short end of the stick. We're paying more than any other locality for water and refuse. It's obscene. We need to change this. I understand you need money to run, but stop spending money. The operating budget has gone crazy, and this is an important, vital need of water, and we shouldn't be paying so much for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldy Yutrowski. Mr. Yutrowski. Okay, then we'll move on. That was Item F. Is there any additional comments and concerns from my colleagues on council?
Yes, Mr.
Dr. Whitaker?
Just to make sure that the right information is going out, I think it was just presented that Portsmouth is paying higher water rates than any other other localities. According to the handout that we were presented on April the twenty-sixth, Portsmouth, according to this, has the lowest water rates of all of the localities per one thousand gallons. So I just want to make sure that that correct information is going out. Is that correct, City Manager?
I'll turn it over. Deputy City Manager, let me tell you what you report from that survey that was done.
Yes, we did a survey across the other localities for water rates per locality per one thousand gallons. Chesapeake is seven dollars and one cent, zero cents. Norfolk is seven point six. Portsmouth is six point zero one zero seven. Suffolk is thirteen point seven eight. Virginia Beach is four point nine.
All right. Thank you.
So we're not the highest.
We're not the highest, right. All right, thank you.
Is that all, sir? Yes. Thank you, sir. Are there any other discussion from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted five-two.
We have now come to Item twenty-two dash one-four-zero G. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three operating budget for the Portsmouth Public School System in the amount of two hundred thirty-nine million, four hundred fifty thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars, and appropriating the necessary funds to implement said budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second. Move for approval.
Second.
And we do have a speaker, Ms. Joanne Clark. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
You ask yourself every year why you need more money for schools. Well, let's talk about it. In the past three years, this body, with the exclusion of one or two people, have passed over eighteen hundred residential units and apartment complexes alone, fourteen hundred residential, single-family residences alone. But yet, in the six years I've watched, no one has asked, what is the true cost of residential development? How does it affect our schools, our roads, our sewers, our water, and so on? No one asks that, and why is that? Because we don't have levels of service established. The previous city I lived in was talking about levels of service in the eighties. because they knew there was a cost associated with every human being you brought into the city. We grapple over money for education year after year. And why is that? Because we've got students that no one counts on. They don't estimate or guesstimate what age these apartments, two and three bedrooms, will carry, how many students would be there, what the needs are, and what the risks for these high-risk children will be because there's not enough staff for them to seek out their needs, mental health and so forth. Every year, you deal with how are you going to pay for infrastructure because nobody asks, what is the true cost of this project? What is the five-year cost? What is the 10-year and the 20-year outlay? Nobody asks. Why? Why do you put yourselves through this and the citizens when there's a cost associated to everything, particularly residential development? You know, most cities worry about the balance of how much residential development they have versus commercial. To have a perfect revenue-based system, you need more commercial than residential. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues on council? Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to see that we are, once again, as a council for the second consecutive year, fully funding the budget as presented by the school board. I think that in a state where we have seen significant cuts in education at the state level, it's incumbent upon us at the local level to have to do what we're doing. And so I want to commend my colleagues for supporting this budget.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
With great pleasure, yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted 7-0.
We have now come to item 22-140, item H. And madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance approving the FY 2023 through 2027 capital improvement program and appropriating $71,730,000 in the FY 2023 capital improvement fund, subject to receipt of the means of financing designated herein.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
And we do have a speaker for this item, item H, and it is Ms. Joanne Clark. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
In the work session, there was a word missing in the discussion. Casino. No one's talking about it. Why? It's about to have a ground opening pretty soon. Walls are up. They're getting ready to hopefully close this deal and make it pretty. And it's a public-private. We practically gave them the land because they got it at half price. It's in front of our learning of higher institution of learning. And they didn't have to pay a lot to do the site work. But yet, we're not talking about projected revenue from it. And most of us know why. We need to be careful with when we make judgments about revenue-producing ideas. This, ladies and gentlemen, is not the end-all-be-all. When you put down one of these fields, even if they're properly maintained, they will barely last eight to 10 years. We know we don't have a good history of maintenance, and we have two degraded water towers to the tune of $4 million that prove that. I hope that you all make better decisions about how you're going to pay for capital improvement projects. And we can't wait but so long to make those decisions as the city manager and CFO has told us we have deadlines, and the rate of money is getting higher and higher. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any additional discussion on this matter? Seeing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted 7-0.
We have now come to item 22-140I. And madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $492,196,475 for the operation of city government during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Thank you, ma'am. And council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
We do have two speakers. And madam, Joanne Clark, would you please come forward? You have five minutes, ma'am.
One word: no.
Thank you, ma'am. We have another speaker, Mr. Merle Rutledge. Merle Rutledge. Thank you. Is there any additional question from our members on council? Seeing none, madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, madam clerk. We have now come to the agenda item of new business, item 22-141. And Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward for consideration?
No.
Thank you, sirs. Item 22-142. Council members, do you have any items to submit? Seeing none? Item 22-143. City Manager Jones, are there any pending items? Well, I do, as the mayor, have one pending item. Today is our city manager's birthday. And so if we could all give her a happy birthday clap. And we wish you more good health and prosperity, ma'am. We've now come to item 22-144. Madam clerk, would you please remind our speakers of the speaker's statement, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council staff or the audience and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comment.
Thank you, madam clerk. Our first speaker on our non-agenda speaker list is Ms. Joanne Clark. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Sometimes not all of us can come and be before you in person. COVID certainly made it difficult, and we're not over with that yet. But I would like to see a service that has a benefit to the citizens. And yes, we're being taxed and feed to the point of almost extinction. But my Verizon cable is terrible. I can never hear all of you. Sometimes it goes out. Sometimes it goes in. Sometimes the screen goes black. Sometimes it drops the whole channel. And the other response I see when I'm looking at the Facebook version of your live feed is that other people are suffering the same issues. I don't know if it's all Verizon or not. But I keep thinking of, what can we do to keep the citizens happy? More transparency in government. And we can watch you in our pajamas. So I'd like to see us work in coordination with TCC and Dr. Bracy, Superintendent of Education, to do a program similar to that of Chesapeake. Sorry, I keep going back to it, but that's where all my history is. They have a wonderful program that teaches students how to do broadcasting, how to run the audio and video. They do the work. It's their classwork. It doesn't cost the city anything. It's a wonderful program. You might want to consult with them about it. I'm sure Dr. Bracy would love it because I'm sure students would like to know about broadcasting, how to do camera work, and more IT availability. Not everybody is going to be college-bound. And I would love to be able to turn on my Verizon, Channel 39, or others who have Cox, Channel 48, or some other way for people through public service can sit in their pajamas and watch you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. First speaker will be Councilman Moody, then Vice Mayor Barnes.
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Clark, at one time, I don't think they currently do, but I see Norcom had such a program that you're speaking of. And it was very effective, in fact, during the election cycle at that time. And I think I'm going back probably, I don't know, 10 years, 12 years. They even interviewed all the candidates that were running. And it was a very professional operation. They put out a quality product. I don't know that they still do that, but I like your suggestion. I don't know why, you know, one of our high schools can't get back in it, perhaps with the assistance of TCC. But I think it's something we should, or they should revisit.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, so you have the floor.
Well, I was just going to say that the school system does offer that. And they actually have that. I just saw yesterday that the student representative did a production with the, I believe it was the Newport News Student Representative. But yes, that's a service that they do provide. I mean, well, that's a class that they do provide, TV production.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Barry Randall. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council at large, madam city manager, happy birthday. I'm joined here with the executive staff of the Brighton-Prentice Park Civic League. I'm here as the president of the Brighton-Prentice Park Civic League. And we've been having a lot of conversations in our civic league about the various things that's going on in our section of the city. And it's very disheartening because we know that crime is kind of everywhere, all over Portsmouth. But when we're looking at our community, we are trying to focus on how can it be better for the citizens that are living there? I asked, I believe, the mayor and madam city manager, they took a ride along with us last year to show them the blighted areas in our community. And we're still fighting to this day. I did tell the citizens along the street of La Salle to make sure that they tune into this city council meeting because it's difficult for them to live on that street, especially between Randolph and Duke Street on La Salle. And it's just very sad because we're trying to figure out what to do. And I was sharing with our vice president, our financial secretary, and others. I said, you know, we have to educate our community because we look at you guys, and I say you guys because you are elected officials. And many of you all, you know, you're going to come down to our community. You're going to ask us for your vote and tell us why we should vote for you. And I've been sharing with them that we have to stop, and I'm sharing this with the public as well, that we have to stop voting for people because they're black or because they're Democrat because we are living in Portsmouth. We are a predominantly black city. We are a predominantly Democrat city. And when you look at the situations, and I'm just talking about Brighton-Prentice Park area, and we're on the outskirts of Deals and Swanson and other communities and Southside Gardens, you know, and not that I want this to happen, but I'm just trying to make a comparison. But can you count back on your hand when the last time a white teenage female under the age of 18 has been killed? Can you count on your hand how many times, how many more than 10 young white males have been killed in our city? That's not happening. So we have to start with all this race craziness and what have you. And I know some of y'all are going to sit up there and use cold words for minority participation and equity and say all these wonderful things to keep the black people thinking that you are really pushing us. But the reality is, when we look at what's happening, our problem is us. And I heard some of you all, and I heard the rules that you can't single you out, so I'm going to do the best I can. But I heard you guys say, you know, it's the old council. Okay, well, if that is true, if the old council got us to where we at today, then it takes four of you all to get something done. So I'm going to play devil's advocate today, and I'm going to say my good friend Lisa Lucas Burke, former council member, okay, you to blame. I'm going to say Mr. Shannon Glover, our mayor, you to blame. Bill Moody, you to blame. And I'm not being funny when I say this. I'm just saying this because I notice we always say the block and this, that, and the third. So if that is the case, and if these individuals are to blame, then what are the others are doing? And I know some of you all, Paul Battle, oh my God, beautiful spirit, and has the community heartbeat, but he can't do it by himself. So my question to you all is, what are you doing and who are we to blame? Because I'm going to advocate and educate the black community to let them know who not to vote for and what we should be doing because we are suffering. We pay the highest taxes, you heard from the fire department, and there's no reason, no need for us to be shocked today as to why folk dying in Portsmouth because we're understaffed. We have the most blighted communities. We have a business in our community because businesses aren't going to be allowed to operate in Old Town illegally. Businesses aren't going to be allowed to operate in certain parts of the city illegally. But right there in Brighton-Prentice Park, we had a business operating illegally, and I had to call Frankie Edmison, the commissioner, to get him to come down, to shut it down, not because we were trying to be ugly, but if I have to pay my taxes as a business owner, they do too. And that's the problem that we have going on in this city, that we have a lot of illegal businesses going on, and there is no accountability. But yet, we are so pro-black and we love our people. But again, you cannot tell me when the last time white people have been dying by the hundreds like our black brothers and sisters are dying in this city. We know who not to vote for this time around.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Tanya Copeland Bailey. And Ms. Bailey, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Tanya Copeland Bailey.
I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
That's okay. I live in the Prentice Park area. I'm a new returning resident to Portsmouth. I'm a 12-year Army veteran, a wife, a mother, an active-duty soldier, a mother of an active-duty soldier, and two black teen boys, a daughter, a sister, and a niece of Portsmouth residents. I also work in Portsmouth. Both sides of my family are longtime residents of the Kathleen Manor area and of Mount Vernon area, Maherman area. I graduated from the Old Norcom along with my mother and my grandmother. I graduated from the Old Norcom along with my mother and my grandmother. As a child, I grew up on Evergreen, I lived on Stoughton, and I had a best friend on Piedmont Avenue. Growing up in Prentice Park, my parents did not have to be concerned with bullets ripping through our home or worry about prostitution in the broad daylight, what's going on now in the Prentice Park area. Just last night, before we went to bed, there was a ripple of gunfire. And then I heard my 16-year-old say, "That was gunfire, Mom." It's like living in a war zone, just like the firefighter said earlier. He's not lying. It's like living in a war zone in Prentice Park. What do we do? How do we take on drug dealers and craps games being played in the daylight? What protection do we have as law-abiding, tax-paying citizens? Even if we wanted to go out in our community and walk around the street, walk around to my aunt's house, we don't feel safe. I'm 47. My mom is older. I don't feel safe as a 47-year-old to walk around the street, let alone let my 16-year-old go to this corner store and buy anything from that corner store that's on Decree Boulevard and the corner of Evergreen. I don't know if you've ridden past it, but if you've ridden past it right across the street from that corner store, it's a craps game going on right next door to a church. And they're out there in the daytime. It seems as though we have no rights to sit on our front porch and feel the breeze, actually go into the corner store and not feel threatened. Speaking of which, the corner stores should have an obligation to keep their stores free of drug activity. I don't know what we can do as the city of Portsmouth, but there are certain rules and regulations that we should be able to enforce, whether it's the city ordinance or something saying, okay, this is your store, you're buying this property, just like the properties, if someone is in the house, the HOA organizations. There are certain stipulations that you have to abide by to live in those homes. You have to keep your yard clean, you have to keep the grass cut. There's certain things that have to be done. We should be able to do that in our city for those businesses that are running in these areas. Since there is no loitering law, there has to be something in act, something is, we can't sit back and say there's nothing for us to do. We're active, I'm an active participant in Portsmouth, even when I was gone for 12 years. When I came back, I supported the businesses in Portsmouth. My cousins are doing things in the community. It's something that we can do, but it's, I know, walking around and doing a, let's say, a neighborhood watch, that's a neighborhood watch, right? I don't feel comfortable doing a neighborhood watch because if I walk, they're gonna see my face. If my 16-year-old walks, they're gonna see his face. If we get in our cars, they're gonna see our cars. So what is, what protection do we have as citizens? Even if we wanted to go out there and walk around in our neighborhood, what protection do we have? Tell me, please, because we want to know.
Councilwoman, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Tonia? Tonia, okay. Tonia, I'm sorry, Ms. Tonia. Well, honestly, again, I grew up in the Prentice Park, Brighton area, so I know all the concerns that you're speaking of, especially on Randolph. And, you know, it's a lot of activity that goes on throughout the day and throughout the night. One thing about it, though, like you're saying, I try to be present in the area, even when I did my give-back last month, I made sure I was in the Prentice Park, Brighton area because, you know, you gotta make sure that we are seeing what's happening, and, you know, you gotta do your part. So I made sure that happened. But I know it is some concerns with Prentice Park. I think last year, our city manager had, what we want to call it, a redevelopment project of $6 million being allocated towards Prentice Park. So that is something that we had on the table. We were just trying to make sure that it fall in a proper funding of Prentice Park. So that'll probably revitalize the lighting, sidewalks, you know, you name it. It'll make it look like a more improved neighborhood so the citizens can respect it a little bit more. So I understand exactly what you're saying, because like we say, when trash is around, when there's potholes in the streets, you know, people just don't care about Prentice Park, so, or Brighton, I'll say Brighton as well, too. So I get exactly, you know, where you're coming from. One thing that I propose is, you know, us looking at another means of security, you know what I say. I've been researching SCOPS. I think Portsmouth redevelopment, that's what they've been using, SCOPS, whatnot, just to put some more eyes on the situation, on what's going on out in Prentice Park. Because we are short-staffed with our public service, and I think we had it as agenda items one time, but I don't think we got to it. So, you know, being that Dale's Home does have their program, and they are allotted a certain amount of authority with our meeting with PRHA, that could be something we can explore to see can they extend that Jewish district on over to Prentice Park and see can they help out with some additional presence. So if you give us a chance to see can we work on that, can our city manager report back with some information on that? Because like I said, it's a program that's already rolling. We just got to explore to see can, you know, they come on back a couple of streets. I think they have a mile radius of Jewish district, I mean, Jewish district, and Dale's Homes would be right in that area, so.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Copeland Bailey has a immediate need. Manager, I'd like for the police chief to get with her before the meeting ends so he can perhaps share some information on what can be done with the gaming operation.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
This problem has existed for years, for decades. Miss Manager, is there any way someone can tell us at this time what impactful thing we can do to alleviate, not to slow it, control it, but to alleviate that problem on those citizens because they've been living in that peril for years? And it's time to get those folks some relief. So please, let someone tell me what can we do to stop, to alleviate it?
Well, I'll start, but then I'll ask the chief of police to come up to talk about specific strategies. But one thing I would like to say, Prentice Park especially have been very diligent in notifying the police of incidents that need to be addressed, and our police has been responsive to that. So working collectively together to identify those issues, I think, is a good way to start. It doesn't solve it. The other piece of that is enforcement from a facility perspective, and we've been very aggressive with citing property owners. And we're also looking to carry that a little bit further because we not only need to be able to cite, but we need to be able to tear some of those structures down. And to do that, it requires the judges to approve that. And so we're going to be having conversations with our judges to determine what we need to do as a city to be able to enforce our permits and make sure that we can hold those owners accountable, and specifically the absentee landlords, to hold them accountable for those properties. So it's a multitude of things that we're doing, but I'll give it to the chief to speak further.
Wait, 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 hold on. Before the chief goes on, Councilwoman Lucas Burke had her hand up. So I have to defer to her right now, and then if there's someone else, and then we'll go to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. And Madam City Manager, you hit right on the spot that I wanted to speak on. And Ms. Tonia Copeland Bailey, thank you for being the bold one in your community who came forward to address this and to kind of shed some light on the situation that's been going on. Of course, we built a building on the corner of Elm and Lincoln years ago to try to change the image of that community, Lucas Lodge, and it kind of cleaned up, some of the neighbors cleaned up. We still in ownership of that property, we just lease it out to a veterans' home right now. So we've done some things to try to clean up that property. But that was my question at Evergreen, where some of those convenience stores and some of those little small stores, I don't know, you know, who would want to go in there and to get anything, because, you know, when you drive by, it's not a welcoming look. So if there is something that we can do to try to get some of these little small corner convenience stores to be, you know, to step up their game or to improve the image or to, you know, take away from the element of being able to allow people to hang out or to do things that are not appealing to the community, that was definitely my concern. And I'm on board to hear what we can do to clean up some of the things between La Salle and Duke right off of Randolph, because I know that area very well. And Mr. Randall, I was on the ride-along with the city manager and the mayor, and, you know, I was taken aback by some of the things that I saw in broad daylight. And, you know, you could go on and on. I didn't bring the book that I wrote down, all of the notes that I put in there, but I had almost two pages of notes of things that I took notice of that need to be addressed in that community.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor, did you have, want to make a comment, sir?
To the city manager, as far as the courts getting involved, is that the same process when it comes to the businesses as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, citizens. So what we're starting to speak about is blight properties. That's exactly what they are. So why would a business allow people to hang out in front of their business all day long and do whatever they desire? Money? Are those stores getting the cut of whatever's going on? Could be. I don't know that for a fact. But what other reason would you allow people to crowd your property so that your real clients can't get to you? Okay? So let's go along that lines. What are we doing? When we're called, we respond. And ma'am, I would say if you call us and we don't respond, or you don't get the response that you desire, or if you don't see action, call again, ask for a supervisor. That's the big thing. We work for the citizens of Portsmouth. Call. If you don't get the results that you expect, if we don't perform up to your expectations, call, ask for a supervisor. That eventually get to me. Hopefully, if you have to ask for a supervisor, that supervisor's gonna get it done. What I can do is I can focus some of my units that I have available as far as vice narcotics in on those areas. So if you make that call and you've identified the areas, I have my assistant chief here, so we'll make a concerted effort to get there and start doing things now. What we need to understand is the laws that used to exist, some of them don't. The things that we used to be able to do when it comes to engage in the public, we can't. We can go up to somebody in these groups that might have been gambling, they put away the money or leave it there, and we start to investigate. If we didn't observe a crime, if we didn't see it, they can tell us to kick rocks, y'all. And we have to kick rocks because we start violating rights. The game has changed tremendously, and we are at a disadvantage. You, as a city leadership, can come up with some creative ways with new ordinances that are legal, and we can move from there. We can brainstorm and come up with some stuff. What we have to be careful about are our people's rights. And I know what the people behind you are thinking, it's the same thing I think every day. It appears that the criminals have more mind or more rights than the citizens who live here. The laws weren't made for innocent people. They weren't made to protect our citizens. They were made to give the criminals a chance at a fair trial or fair treatment when they face the law. Again, that places us at a disadvantage. So we have to be creative and still operate within the confines of the law, which is becoming more and more restrictive. You've seen that the courts in our land has changed so that we can't stop cars for certain things. Let's face it, it's almost impossible to stop a car nowadays, unless they're holding a cellphone in their hand. That makes sense, now, doesn't it? That's considered a threat to life and everything else. There are so many things that hinder us, and I'm not making excuses. I'm telling you what's going on. I can tell you what we do need is we need for people like you to stay engaged. We need for everybody in here, when you see something wrong, call us. Hold us to task. We can become creative, we can find ways to do different things, and we will. We'll engage, and we may not know. I'm not gonna say that we didn't see the people outside there, because I don't know that the large crowds weren't noticed. I'm not gonna stand up here and lie to anybody. So what I can say is now I've been aware, I've been made aware now, and I have an obligation to act and try to make sure that we can make it safer for our citizens. Now, with the other thing else, you all heard me speak about ShotSpotter and some of the other things that we're moving forward. We have several task forces that are in operation right now. I partnered with the state police, they're gonna give us some help on traffic enforcement and some other things, and that's happening, I think, in the next couple of weeks. We had to get on their rotation list so they can help us out. Is that normal? No. But we reached out, they accepted, and they're gonna help us as much as they can with some things that happen in Portsmouth. I've told you that we partner with a bunch of our federal agencies, and we have. Those operations are starting to commence, some are in operation now, and I don't want to misspeak because I don't want to give away what we're trying to do. I know a lot of people want to know exactly what are you doing. If I tell you, I'm telling some of the people that are probably watching right now to find out, what am I gonna do, or what are we gonna do? Yes, sir.
Is there a loitering law?
No, sir.
You mean if several people who have no objective is on a property that doesn't belong to them, that's not loitering?
If, you can deal with trespassing, but if they're just hanging out and nobody calls, and even if we show up and they're on some property and the complainant who owns that property is not calling, we have nothing.
The real shame of this situation is, there's a daycare in the area where they hang, and they've been doing that for years. And we need to, we need to meet that obligation. That's a no-no. I mean, I mean a daycare. That's the first thing the kids see in the morning and in the evening. Then you got those seniors up and down that strip. They've been complaining for years. I think we need to make a greater commitment.
Okay. So what we can do, and what we will do, is we can increase our presence in that area as much as possible. Now, like I said, we still have limitations on what we can do once we are in that area as far as engagement, but that's not gonna slow us down. We still have to try.
Can we talk? Can't we talk to them?
Yes, sir.
Can we talk to the citizens? That maybe we can appeal to their humanity. I mean, we need to try anything. We need to do some things, everything that we can. And I'm not trying to, but this is the problem that has existed for years. The same spot, I've had a number of citizens at different times say, can you please, will you please? And we gotta do something about that, chief.
Yes, sir. I agree. Like I said, we'll focus some resources in that area. And again, our people have got to call us because we're mobile and we're all over the place. And if it comes back after we leave, call back again. It's a big problem. Like you said, the problems that we're facing in Portsmouth didn't happen today or yesterday. They started a long time ago. A lot of them started with, ah, they're not doing anything, they're not hurting anything. The next thing, you go to the next stage where, oh, that's normal. And now they're doing something that you don't like, and they're ingrained, and they've taken up ownership of a people's property. So we have to start all over again. Meantime, the citizens that live in those Meantime, the citizens that live in those areas are petrified, because they think they're going to be retaliated against. This is our starting point.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I just wanted to say, I look forward to you guys having that conversation about what type of ordinances that we can put together to deal with some of those things. Also, from speaking to some of the businesses in the area, and I know the one she's talking about, the white store. Sometimes, some of those people that, the ones that run the store, even the BP, they're actually scared themselves to actually say something to the people that's hanging around there because of, of what that could bring. So I know a lot of times, I go to the, I frequent the BP a lot. I go to the white store as well, and I, and I see a lot of people hanging around, and I talk to them, and they talk about how they are scared. But kind of to go back to what you were saying earlier about how the laws, I don't want to misquote you, kind of benefit the criminals?
Let's say to protect their rights. It's, they weigh more heavily towards a person who has been accused. In a lot of cases, that's the right thing to do. It just is, is to protect their rights. The citizens, somebody who's done nothing wrong, have no need for a right to remain silent, or anything else along that line. Or a citizen who's upright and forth, they're not worried about a traffic stop on their car because their equipment is operating correctly. They got their seatbelt, and they're doing the right thing. And in some cases, the police have contacted people, and they've made a traffic stop, which also led to a search of the vehicle, which led to an arrest, and something will go wrong in court. So it's a process. That's why some of them are changing. I don't run the US, I'm just watching what's happening. But we can work on, the thing about ordinance, we can work together with everybody, city council, city attorney, and the city manager, and maybe propose some things that'll help us police the streets a little bit better.
No, and I, and I just want to go back. I'm glad you cleared that up for me, because, you know, I think some of the laws that are being passed are to kind of help protect our citizens' rights as a, as a family, who had, a person who had a family member who was locked up for 20 years for a crime he didn't commit. You know, I wish some things were put in place 20 years ago, so that he could, he wouldn't have to spend 20 years of his life in jail. So, you know, I'm glad you did clear that up for me. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. As you all know, Portsmouth is considered a historic city. What has happened since 1752, when Portsmouth became a city by the General Assembly, making Portsmouth a city. In 2019, Miller and Associates did a safe, did a study for how much money. That money spent was the people's money, the one who pays taxes. Here are the city council's recommendations. Create and support a poverty task force. Who are they? Identify and implement policy changes that could affect poverty. Connect residents owing city debt with financial counseling. Did the woman I met the other day get financial counseling for the debt she had with the water and utilities department? Work with the police department's hotspots to develop repercussions for loitering and other low-level disruptive behavior and disorder clusters in their jurisdiction. Ensure no Portsmouth city employee earns sub-poverty wages. Incorporate poverty alleviation into city funding processes. Discuss programs impact on poverty when developing the annual budget. Require city-funded programs to be based on research, proving that they effectively address poverty. About poverty in Portsmouth. Of the 16,228 residents in poverty, 1,874 individuals are ages 18 to 64. 1,653 individuals ages 65 and over. 7,314 children younger than 18. 5,000. 387 individuals ages 18 through 64 are without disability diagnosis. How much money was paid for this study? The experience I had trying to help a panel handling woman I met at Rosa Shopping Center and church and gave me an experience of how the city helps someone in need. Looking at Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs chart is a guide to how to focus on taking care of those in poverty first. How is this process done in Portsmouth? First level is physiological needs. Second level, safety and security needs. One and two. Do you all know that? No. My experience trying to help, get help for a woman whose property was condemned, and she had to move out with no money and no resources. I took her to get help, and I haven't heard what was accomplished at this time. The first level of need is survival. Do not spend any money until the needs are fulfilled for all the people.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. William Dodson. And sir, you have five minutes.
Hi, Bill Dodson, Dr. William Dodson, Park Manor. Thanks again for hearing me. 900 million infrastructure needs that we have. That's over $20,000 per household. I don't know where that money's going to come from. None of you are addressing that with this council. We don't have significant sewer, we don't have water, we don't have stormwater. The engineers have estimated again at $900 million. Where's the money coming from? I don't know if I made myself clear. $900 million is the need. And I still feel like this council is ignoring it even worse than the last council was. When are we going to address it? $900 million, the engineers have estimated it at. Let me repeat that. $900 million. I don't know if I've been heard, but let me emphasize that for everybody else in the room, too. $900 million is the estimate for our infrastructure needs. Can we, can y'all, can we, I'm sorry, I don't want to direct it to anybody in particular. That's a big number. That's a really big number. $900 million we need. Twenty, over $20,000 per household. I, I don't know how many times I can repeat this to make my point. It's what we need to repair the city. The sewer, the water, the electric, the stormwater. $900 million is needed. $900 million. I got three minutes. $900 million. $900 million. It's been ignored, and I still feel like it's being ignored, along with a lot of other problems in the cities everybody else has complained about. There's a lot to go on, but it's $900 million the engineers have estimated we need in repairs. I'm sorry, I don't want to take any questions on this. I don't want to be addressed back from you by it. I just wanted to make a statement about it. $900 million. $900 million. Nine, I've got five, I've got five minutes. I, I, please don't address me. I don't want to take any questions afterwards. $900 million is what the engineers have estimated. They've been here to this council to present it to you already. My number may not be precise. It may be a little bit higher than that if I'm, if I'm wrong, but it's $900 million that we need to repair just the basic needs to see they're going to fall apart. Y'all know what I'm talking about. Some of the sewer being pumped every day. $900 million. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Just for clarification purposes, we are addressing some of these issues, right, as it pertains with our Aqua Funds, grants, and our CIP?
Correct. That's one of the, the things that council has already approved, funding to address our sewer system issues, the pump stations. We also put into the CIP additional resources for infrastructure improvements, as well as we aggressively gone after grants to address our infrastructure issues. So this budget is predicated on the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, and we put resources to address infrastructure within the realm of resources the city has available.
Thank you.
We, we also...
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. We also pulled a $30 million bond last year, and along with 40 million other dollars, all those funds were gone into our infrastructure. Our infrastructure is over 100 years old, and to insinuate that this council is responsible, had the councils in the past done one-fourth of what we've done, we wouldn't be here. I understand your disgust and disdain for what we're facing, but we're doing the best we can, and we're going to continue to do the best we can. And with the infrastructure funds, we're going to try and get as much of that as we can. 400, 500 million if possible, and that those funds are going to go into that system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker for the evening, Mr. Cedric Cradle. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, ma'am. All of the council members, city manager, and others. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I just kind of heard an individual who works for you guys in the city, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. It's amazing how an individual can come in here and talk about how much violence is in the community, and the same individual spoke against, or spoke about a young man getting killed at the sportsplex, but was more focused on the, on the event than the death. It's amazing to me. See, we're picking and choosing, and it's obvious that, that we're picking and choosing even the individual. And that individual hadn't been chastised, but I'm going to chastise him today. But anyway, City Council, what we talked about beforehand about the cameras on the lights, I ain't heard nothing done. Again, I had one of my mother's son get killed at an intersection where the camera was at, and the camera was non-functional. So again, Mr. Battle, you talk about this has been going on for years, all this crime. There's no solutions, my friend.
Mr. Cradle?
Yes, sir.
Sir, sir, we, we have to address it to the whole council.
Okay, city council, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
We cannot address it to individuals.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. You made a statement, that's all. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. With the council, these areas of concern have been drug in these biting areas since I was a child. So there's no solution, there has never been no solution. Heroin has been one of the biggest problems in the city of Portsmouth since I was a child. I came up in this city. So again, those same areas had the same issues. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, where's the solutions? But again, this is an election year, and I'm not saying nobody's saying a lot of things for, to get elected, but again, these problems been here. They've been in existence. What about the CCTV? Putting them in high priority areas like Linkin Park and Dale's Home? I would have spoke to those people, and I took a couple of the mothers, and they seen the TV, the CCTV they got going. That's an awesome program. They should be in some of these high crime areas, South Side Gardens, where three of my mothers lost children at. But I'm just saying, ShotSpotter, a great asset to our police department, since we don't have enough police officers. But again, how much is it going to cost the city? Nobody's said nothing yet. I think that should be addressed. Innovative ways to increase police recruitment, and also innovative ways to fight crime, which ShotSpotter is one of them. And I thank Assistant Chief Drinkers for sharing a lot of the information with us. But what about the valuable resources for families affected by gun violence? That, nobody, nobody knows where these resources are, but you guys are saying y'all giving out money to a lot of these programs, but nobody can get in contact with these people. But I'm just saying, again, how, how do the families get in contact? What about the revival resources do we have for job placement, for all these violent offenders that get out of jail, who re-offend? There's no job placement. I'm not talking about the re-entry program, which is horrible. And do your research, and you'll find out, it's no good. Again, no real solutions. My thing, again, I come up here to speak for the, the voiceless, the over 50 unsolved murders that are still in the city of Portsmouth. Our mothers are getting tired, because again, nobody's reaching out to them. And I say it again, until God take my breath away, I come back before any council and say the same names that I'm about to repeat. Unsolved murder, Cor Ture, Emmanuel Ture, their two brothers. Jaquan Johnson, killed in South Side. Antonio Atkins, killed from across the store with Vickers. Carlton Dodd, killed in Cavalier Manor. Tashik Wolf, killed at the gas station. Jeff Bazemore, killed at the light intersection. Tasia Hicks, Devon, Darian Grazer, Majay. Majay was killed, and there was on camera, and nobody done nothing yet. Demar Sykes, Keisha Smith, DeAndre Morrison, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon Nowhere, Kari Thomas, Yashin Caraway, James Hill, Javon Williams, William Selfish, Carlton Baines, Andre Howard, Donkey Collins, Robert Ardis, Malcolm Hoskins, Kareem Barshay, Andre Hall, Omar Booker, Robert Langson, Nicholas Sells, Andrew Bay, Richard Tucker, Curtis Walton, Marty Collins, Brian Williams, Bеким Грей, Rodney Anderson, and Malaney Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
ShotSpotter is $200,000 a year for it, and all re-entry programs will work if they're implemented properly and dealt with with the proper follow-up.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, you know, just to accolades, that's an excellent program that they're doing over in PRHA, Dale's Home. During our joint meeting, I did request for that same, those schematics on how they're getting that stuff done. If you, if you haven't seen it, I encourage everyone on council to try to take a peek at what they got going on. These guys are the real deal, pretty much, you know, just doing their part in that little area. So just imagine what they can do if they can expand it a little bit more to some of these problem-stricken neighborhoods. So, you know, I'm glad that you came up here and to give a little bit more insight on what I've been talking about for so long. And, and like I say, you can't sometimes hear about it, you got to go out there and see it for yourself. And I went out there and I seen it for myself. All right? So I appreciate your input, and thank you once again.
Also, they have a wonderful program in the afternoon at the church... Also, they have a wonderful program in the afternoon at the church department. If you go there between 5:00 and 8:00, you could see what they're doing and possibly join the staff there.
Mr. Cradle, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
Seeing no additional business from my colleagues on council, this meeting is adjourned. Good evening.